From, uh... That was, that was interesting. Catwood, yeah, Catwood. Light bulbs these days, you can't go buy a light bulb and know what you're getting. Is that the engineer?
The engineer.
How are you? Randy's off on vacation, so I, I have to stand in for him today. I haven't either, and I understand it's quite flat with a lot of water.
Yeah.
Every day we went snorkeling. Almost a free vacation, 'cause... I don't like, I'm... I didn't wear a coat for two years. Remember, you couldn't say anything, but you could go there.
Fine.
It's gonna go down one notch. Uh, she usually adjusts it for me. Uh-huh.
Well, you do, but it, it didn't work.
But massage you.
Thank you. My legs were asleep.
All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. First order of business will be the roll call.
Chair Wilson.
Present.
Vice Chair Kerth.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Do.
Present.
Thank you.
Will you please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance led by Commissioner Kerth and Commissioner Do?
Bow your heads as we pray. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. Ask that you bless this meeting so that best enter this city.
Thank you, please be seated. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. We've got two. We've got the commission meeting, the special meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. I'll move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Oh, we need to do them individually, I was gone second.
I was gone for one.
I was gone on the first one.
Okay, so we have to do them individually.
November eighteenth. And I have a second by Commissioner Do, so a motion by Vice Chair Kerth, a second by Commissioner Do to approve the minutes of the special meeting, November eighteenth. All in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
And Chair Wilson is abstaining.
And the next order is the approval of minutes for the commission meeting of December ninth, two thousand fifteen.
The move.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Do to approve those minutes, a second by Chair Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain from that one.
All abstain.
Those minutes are approved with Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Huber abstaining.
All right, just a matter of housekeeping. If you wish to speak to an item before the Planning Commission this evening, if you please file a white card and give it to the secretary. We'll go ahead and move to agenda item number one.
Thank you, Chair Wilson. Item number one is case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 four one. It is a tentative parcel map to allow for the creation of two parcels from one existing parcel with an environmental exemption. This is located at one seven four five zero Silica Road. This is the site of the previous AJC glass plant. The applicant is just requesting to separate the site, basically the main plant, from the accessory processing warehouse. The parcel meets all, the parcel map meets all Title sixteen requirements, and staff recommends approval as condition.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number one. I do have one card, Carl Coleman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Carl Coleman, I'm with BCA Engineering, representing the client here, and let you know that we accept the conditions as presented by staff, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to agenda item number one? Being none, I'll go ahead and close agenda, public comment, and bring that back to the commission.
Wilson, I'd like to move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution P sixteen dash zero zero one, approving the tentative parcel map and find the project categorically exempt under CEQA.
All right, who was the second?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Porter, a second by Commissioner Huber to approve the item as condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved.
And we'll move to agenda item number two. There has been a... Commissioner Huber, I don't know if you wanted to announce your...
I have a, probably have a conflict on this. I'm out of fundraisers for the Elks Lodge, so I have a potential con...
With that, staff, item number two is PLN fifteen dash forty-two. It's being requested by Open Door Counseling Agency at one four zero seven zero Hasbury Road in Suites one oh four and one oh five. Staff has requested a continuance due to a glitch in the noticing where the public hearing notice boundary was taken from the, the center of the suite and not from the property edges, and therefore, three parcels were left off. Two of the parcels have the same owners as did receive notices, however, a third, the Elks Lodge, was not notified at all. Therefore, they don't have any representation here today, and we wouldn't recommend moving forward. With that, we would recommend continuing this case to February tenth, two thousand sixteen. But we do recommend that, that you open the public hearing and allow any testimony from people who are here on the item to be continued.
Definitely. All right, I will go ahead and open up the public comment for agenda item number two. Anyone wishing to speak, see, I got Scott Smith.
Hello.
Aye.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. We're with an organization called Open Door Counseling. We specialize in forensic counseling. Currently, from the last numbers we ran...
Turn the mic up.
There are approximately three hundred and fifty individuals who register as sex offenders that are in Victorville. We are the sole contractee for the state of California and the federal government to provide outpatient counseling to these individuals. We don't bring them, they are already here. I was told that it's very important to explain a few things, because when people hear that population, there's a very negative stigma attached to it. We are not advocates for these individuals. If anything, our program leads to the arrest of many individuals that are not in compliance with the conditions of their supervision. These, these programs came about after Mr. Gardner committed some heinous crimes in San Diego, and then they followed it up by Mr. Garrido up in Antioch, who kept someone hostage in his backyard for years. Our governor, Schwarzenegger, responded to outrage in the community when the communities in San Diego confronted him when they found out these individuals were not being intensely supervised when we had an opportunity. Once they're off probation or parole, they could be standing next to you in Stater Brothers, we would never know. In the room with us now, we do have some representatives of the government. We do the best we can. It's a very, a very difficult population to work with, and, and there are times we get beat up from all sides. Since this posting was in the newspaper, I've had anonymous people call me on my personal cellphone because they mistakenly think we're advocates for, for sex offenders, or we're bringing sex offenders to Victorville. We currently operate locations in multiple cities, we're all over the place. There are so many people that have been let out of jail. The least we can do is try to intensely supervise individuals that are capable of committing heinous offenses. Currently, we have locations in Baldwin Park, San Fernando Valley, Antelope Valley, we're in the Inland Empire, we're in Pomona, we're everywhere, because this is where these guys are settling when they get out of prison. It, it has already happened to have three hundred and fifty of these guys that are in this city already, and there is no provider of services in this city. Someone from the Planning Commission already went to verify a couple addresses of supposed providers. They had cobwebs on their door, and there were dust on the handles, because we're pretty straightforward. And the reason why these other agencies haven't stood before you is because they kind of slipped in the city without doing it the right way. We're very transparent, we have nearly zero recidivism rate. I wish I could tell you why these guys don't reoffend when they're in the program. The containment model, and it's on the public website through CASM, the Governor's Board, the California Sex Offender Management Board, it has three components. Supervision from law enforcement, which is the parole agent or the probation officer, a therapist, and mandatory polygraphs. We have had clients admit to unknown cases. We have had clients admit to behaviors that were unknown to their supervision deputy because they cracked during the polygraph. All of our polygraphers are either retired or active duty law enforcement, and that's part of the law. If they refuse to be polygraphed, they are at risk of going to jail, just on that alone. We were delayed in opening an office in the Antelope Valley, and in the twelve months that it took us to open the office in the Antelope Valley, there were three incidents of creepy old guys trying to pull little girls in their car on the way to school. And that's when we got a phone call from Sacramento to reprimand us for not being open in the Antelope Valley. And since we've been open in the Antelope Valley, we have zero recidiv- recidivism. Zero clients have reoffended. I wish this would go on after they're off of probation or parole. I wish there was a way to extend probation or parole when we discover someone is fixated or dangerous. But all we can do is gather as much information as we can, and we share it with local law enforcement. And to think, before Governor Schwarzenegger pushed this law through, this component didn't exist. You have three hundred and fifty of these guys in your community already, and there are zero counseling agencies to pull them in to find out how they did what they did, do they recognize what they did, are they feeling that way right now? Let's get your agent on the phone. You know, if you're gonna blame it on drugs, and you're using drugs, I'm scared of you. If you're a guy that says I was drunk when I did it, and you're still drinking, I'm terrified of you. And what I explained to one of our planning commission, oh, yeah.
I was just gonna, you mentioned three things they're required to do, that supervision of law enforcement, a therapist, and polygraph?
Yeah, it's the containment model, the three legs of the stool.
We don't have an agency doing that right now, then they're just going to their supervision of law enforcement, they're not seeing a therapist?
And they're not being polygraphed.
By the therapist and the polygraph?
Yes. Yes.
I just wanted to...
Yeah, we have some great agents, we have some great probation officers. Most of these guys have GPS monitoring. It just shows you where the guy was, right? It doesn't show you what the guy is doing. And some of these guys have fixations, they're in Stater Brothers with you right now. You know, a, a guy may look like someone in the room right now. We get them in, and we just get them to start talking about it. And then they'll start to disclose beliefs that are not consistent with what we agree to as a society. And we start working on it. And we make sure law enforcement is aware. A law enforcement officer may have thirty people on his caseload, or fifty. What we can do is say, you know those other twenty-nine? Okay, but this guy, you need to know where he is tonight because of what he disclosed in group today. Okay, I don't know about the other twenty-nine, but we know this guy is dangerous. Those other twenty-nine may never get a traffic ticket again. Currently, our parole unit is directly across the street from Kaiser Hospital. Our preference would be to be across the street from the parole unit. Across the street from where we're meeting, there's domestic violence programs. A lot of our clients are those guys. Our clients report to the parole unit every day of the week. We present locations. We were told that we needed to find a location C-one. We found location C-one that we wouldn't accept because there's certain places I don't want to be. I don't want to be in a building with a shared bathroom with my neighbor. Maybe I have a transient client that's doing a bird bath, or maybe somebody has a bathroom fetish. I prefer to be in a standalone building with its own bathroom, next to a big field. I've given all of our addresses to our representatives from planning, they've Googled our addresses, and they know I'm telling the truth. We prefer mixed-use industrial. I don't want to be next door to a nail salon. I don't want to give these guys the opportunity to be jerks with the people that live in our community, but they live in the community. Of the locations we provided to planning, one was perfectly appropriate, zoned appropriate, huge parking lot, but that's not where we would prefer to be. There's a beauty salon, there's, you know, there's just other businesses there. The location we submitted is next door to a vacant giant field. And our preference would be to be in the civic center area, preferably across from parole, or as close to the police department as we possibly can, because we don't have security, and, and our therapists look like the people in this room. Sometimes, we give these guys news they don't want to hear, and they get mad at us. And our only recourse is to pick up the phone and call for help, right? But I appreciate the time that you've allowed me to share. I was going to speak about, this is just an issue, are we zoned appropriately or not? And I was told, I was reprimanded by Mrs. Smith and, and my other representatives over here, that I needed to take time to explain how this came about. And if anybody has Googled, Google Mr. Gardner, and Google Mr. Garrido. And when Schwarzenegger went to San Diego, the community was outraged when they found out the level of supervision that one of these guys actually has. And we're doing the best we can. Our polygraphers have had these guys disclose incredible information. And they, they disclose it openly in the group, and it's scary. And maybe seven out of ten, or eight out of ten, will never commit another crime. That's not what we're here for, we're here for the guy that is a risk to my kids. Okay? And I, I just don't want to come up and get beat up. You know, we spent thousands of dollars in this process, and I'm try, trying to show to federal probation officers and the California State parole agents that we're doing our due diligence, and we're trying to open up in Victorville. And if we're denied, I would just ask that you give us guidance. We will open up in any location, anything the side of a double Y, in any field, as long as it's walking distance to a bus stop. We have a number of individuals who do not attend, and their valid excuse is, I couldn't make it because I didn't have transportation. I couldn't make it because it's too far. If I come and I get back, it's gonna be dark, and my parole agent doesn't wa, want me walking through the streets after dark. But the bus only runs every hour on the week. Whatever the excuse is, they're all valid, and there'll be excused absences. But if we're a block from the parole unit, if you can report to parole, you can report to us. So we're trying, we'll, we'll go in any location you want. We, we don't want to go into places we found that were C-one because most of them are in strip malls that are filled. We found a strip mall that's vacant. I believe the tenants in that building are, they're bill collectors. That's why the parking lot's always empty. It's people that call and collect bills over the phone. There are no, it's not retail, we don't have to worry about that. But anyway, if anybody has any questions...
Well, question I had, the facility in Apple Valley, is that gonna remain open, or...
It, it's, it's, it's not a good spot right now. It's not a good spot, just because there's some issues. But it was a temporary spot because we thought this process would move quickly. You know, there's some basic issues, like it needs a roof and...
Well, thank you for all the information. I mean, I, I read your, the write-up that you did with correspondence back and forth with Alex, and very informative.
And we don't want to be known as the sex offender people.
No, and that's initially, because I saw the article in the paper, and, and having read everything, it was kind of disheartening that it really wasn't quite a, a good perspective of what you guys are actually trying to do. You do realize that we, we are gonna request a continuance?
Yeah.
For the item for, until next month, to give proper noticing for, I believe it's the Elks, or if anyone else, it might have been missed. So, but any questions?
Chairman, would you please indulge me? I'd like to ask clarification. I believe in your testimony today, it's my impression that you gave me the impression that California only has you performing this task, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I find that amazing, if, if not alarming. And we have no, there's no county agency that can form the same task that you do or fulfill that responsibility?
No, sir, I believe we're, we're very good at what we do.
So, you have carte blanche, total autonomy in the state of California to do what you do?
Not in the entire state.
Also?
The state is split into regions.
I recognize that.
Okay, so we have the San Fernando Valley. We have the Antelope Valley. We have San Bernardino, that includes the high desert and the low desert. We also have an office in Pomona, which old people like me would call the Pomona Valley. And we still have an existing office in the San Gabriel Valley, which is Baldwin Park. You don't get very much larger than us. There may be one company in the state of California that has more locations and serves more clients. We are good at what we do.
You have clients and, and office in Bakersfield?
No.
Northern California?
No, we're not up there yet.
So your concentration's primarily Southern California?
And we're not as far as San Diego, yet.
And again, there's no other agency that can form either countywide or statewide what you're doing?
No, actually, I got a phone call today from Melissa Leon, who is the coordinator for the LA County Probation Department, trying to place one of their clients, because apparently he got kicked out of another agency in Kern County. There's, this is a very niche, uh, uh, field of study. If you go to the CASM website, you'll see there's a long process to even... If you go to the CASM website, you'll see there's a long process to even be certified as a therapist to work with these individuals. This is not your normal counseling, they're a very, very challenging population. It can, it can be very, very challenging, some of these guys are nice, they're like your uncle, and some of these guys are just very, very hardcore individuals and we try our best. And we're very good at it, and our recidivism rate is above reproach.
Well, I, I thank you for your testimony today and I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Oh, and I believe I provided our actual contract to you in that huge package you have, I actually provided the paperwork from the state of California and from the federal government that identifies us as the sole contractor for this region.
Thank you.
Questions? I thank you for the detailed information and this is projected to be, you know, continued unfortunately, um, for the fairness of a, a property owner nearby. Um, and you've answered a lot of the questions, um, I don't think we need to go into this tonight, but just, I would like to prepare because on the next public hearing when everyone will be here, um, you know, others and myself will probably ask, um, one of the biggest potential, um, hypothetical challenges in this use from neighbors and possibly even myself is, how is this use here and also your other locations? How would that, how does that possibly negatively affect close-lying neighbors, retail, office, shopping center across the street? Uh, maybe you could give us a little more detail next time on historical items in those cases and challenges that you may have or may not have had on your other locations? 'Cause I think that's what a lot of the public might be concerned about. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to continue or just? Is there anyone else going to, wishing to speak to agenda item number two? Being none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. Oh, wait, leave public comment open and contin, make a recommendation to continue to our February ninth, two thousand and sixteen meeting. February tenth, sorry.
That recommendation, I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a, a motion by Chair Wilson to continue this item to the February tenth meeting of the Planning Commission. And, um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that has been continued with Commissioner Huber, um, absent.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Agenda item number three is, uh, case number PLN fifteen dash zero 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 two zero, it's tentative parcel map and a site plan to allow for, uh, the phase development of a two, uh, tenant, uh, commercial, uh, complex located on the east side of Industrial Boulevard just north of Bear Valley. This proposal consists of, um, approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet of, of area in two phases, the first phase would be approximately fifteen thousand square feet, the second phase would be approximately twelve thousand square feet, uh, the first phase would be the rear building of the site, um, along with this first phase, all landscaping improvements would be done, and street improvements along Industrial Boulevard, um, and the alleyway. This proposal, um, meets all requirements of Title sixteen, including parking, aesthetics, uh, design guidelines, et cetera. Additionally, uh, this proposal was continued from the previous Planning Commission hearing, hearing in December, there were some concerns with, uh, condition number twenty of the site plan in respects to, uh, a requirement to pave it. Um, after discussing the, the proposal and the, and the condition with the applicant, um, there's a compromise made between staff and the applicant to, uh, revise condition number twenty, um, as noted in the continuance memo, which would include, um, rather than pavement, uh, because of concerns with the easement area that is there and, and the, the applicant's, uh, desire to retain that easement or, or, I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry, uh, not retain it, but, uh, hopefully get that vacated in the future from where the neighboring property owners, that by paving it, it would, uh, reduce those efforts, so the compromise was to, uh, do three to six inch cobblestone compacted with the rolled curb that would allow the easement area to remain, would allow trucks to access it, but would also alleviate any, uh, maintenance concerns staff had raised previously. Additionally, as proposed in this Exhibit A in the continuance memo, um, it would not, uh, require deviation from Title sixteen and would meet all requirements of sixteen. Uh, therefore, as proposed with the revised condition number twenty, uh, staff recommends approval of the proposal.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number three, anyone wishing to speak to agenda number three?
Good evening, uh, thank you for taking the time to hear the case, uh, my name is Richard Gottlieb, I'm the, uh, owner of the property and, uh, we were here in front of you last month and, uh, uh, I also have the architect here again to answer any more detailed questions you want. Um, I realize a couple of you weren't here, so, uh, if you want me to re-go through anything or have the architect go anything, through anything, we can. Um, but the last kind of remaining item's pretty straightforward and I think we came up with a solution that allows trucks to still drive over it, but it also kind of delineates it from the re, from the normal part of the highway. Um, so, you know, we think it's a really tight plan, we heard what the Planning Commission had to say last month and, you know, we kind of tightened it up and I think we got it. If you have any questions, let me know, or I can have the architect speak to it too. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak to agenda item number three? Being none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment.
Chairman, I'd like to, uh, go ahead and, um, find the site plan portion of the project exempt from CEQA, um, adopt resolution P dash one five dash zero three five approving the, uh, case number PLN fifteen dash zero 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 two zero, um, subject to attached conditions of approval, including the revised language for condition number twenty as noted in the staff report. And adopt resolution P dash one five dash zero three six approving the, uh, tentative parcel map for PLN fifteen dash zero 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 two zero, subject to all of the conditions attached in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Kurt, a second by Commissioner Do to, uh, approve this item with the revised revisions to, uh, condition number twenty. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That project has been approved.
And, uh, agenda item number four.
Thank you, Chairman Wilson, item number four is case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 two five. It is a general plan amendment from public institutional to high-density residential to low-density residential and a zone change and, from public civic to high-density residential to single-family residential with a negative declaration. This is located on thirty acres west of Verbena Road, east of Inabudding, Mona Vista Road, north of Inabudding, Nyack Road, and south of La Mesa Road. Essentially, the thirty-acre site was originally zoned for R-one. Um, during our general plan amendment update in two thousand and eight, uh, the site was, uh, twenty acres of that site was rezoned to public civic, um, and a small portion of two and a half acres was rezoned to high-density residential. Uh, the civic portion was an attempt to assist, uh, Snowline School District with, uh, siding some school sites. However, those haven't materialized, um, the applicant still wishes to retain the original R-one zoning and not be limited by, um, the PC zoning restrictions that doesn't allow single-family development. Um, staffers reviewed the proposal and, uh, recommends that, uh, you send a favorable recommendation to the city council to approve this amendment. We're available if you have any questions.
I'll go ahead and open up public comment for agenda item number four. Anyone wishing to speak to agenda item number four? Pack house.
You ran, you ran everybody out of here. Uh, my name's Ed Bondaman with Joseph E. Bondaman Associates, I re, represent the, uh, owner. I'm here for questions if you have any.
Questions?
Oh, okay. Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna close public comment if you have something to say.
No, I'll, hang, I, I don't. Thank you though.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Go back to the commission. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and make the recommendation to city council to the adoption of the attached negative declaration pursuant to sections one five zero seven four of the CEQA Act and adopt resolution P dash fifteen dash zero four eight recommending city council approve the general plan amendment portion of case PLN fifteen zero 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 two five and adopt resolution P fifteen dash zero four zero recommending city council approve, approval of the zone change portion of case PLN fifteen dash zero 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 two five.
I'll second that. We have a motion by commission, by Chair Wilson, a second by Commissioner Porter recommending, um, this item to be, uh, approved by the city council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that will be, um, scheduled for city council hearing, um, as discussed with planning staff, we're gonna attempt to send that to the February second city council meeting. Thank you.
And agenda item?
This is not official, but thank you.
Uh, agenda item number five?
This proposal is a, uh, is our climate action plan proposal, it's, uh, recommending, uh, that you continue the item for two months to our March ninth hearing. Um, we're still working with the building industry, uh, we still need to prepare a, uh, screening table that, uh, goes over the implementation of the program. So we should have that available in March for the hearing and, uh, should be at that point able to move forward to city council.
Do I need to open public comment or just request a continuance?
Better open it.
In one, one motion.
Uh, open a public comment for anyone that wishes to speak to agenda item number five. Oh, wait. Then do we leave public comment open and then continue again? All right. So make a motion to continue this item to our March ninth, two thousand and sixteen Planning Commission meeting?
Second.
We have a first, um, by, um, Chair Wilson, a second by Vice Chair Kurt to continue this item to the March ninth, uh, regular meeting of the Planning Commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be continued to March ninth.
In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within the Planning Commis, Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Uh, please limit the length of your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to address the Planning Commission? Being none, close public comment. And agenda item number six.
It's just information purposes only from the school district, Hesperia School District.
Any questions or comments in regards to agenda number six?
I, I have a question. I believe somewhere in the communication, there was an indication that if there was a question or concerns, that, um, there's an invitation to, um, go to Hisburgh Unified, oh, yes, Uni, Hisburgh Unified School District to discuss that. Is that correct? It's, it's in the communication here somewhere, I should've...
Yeah, there is a meeting.
It states the date of the meeting, Chris, the public hearing that Hesperia School District is gonna have regarding this item. So we made sure it was on this agenda, 'cause it's the last couple of weeks of January, something like that.
So, my question was, if there is a question, does, is that from the audience with them? Is that with staff only or commissioner and staff or, I don't know?
We've never had that, we've never met with them, uh, other than just in prep, preparing for school facilities in the future, so if, uh, we, I'm sure we could arrange a meeting with commissioner and staff.
All right, I don't have anything at this time, I'm gonna, uh, check with someone and then, um, some information and then I'll, I'll get back with you in a short order.
Thank you. All right, um, and then a presentation of reports by, uh, commission members, Commissioner Porter?
Um, the only thing that I would like us to consider doing is, um, the possibility of looking into, um, making, uh, parking lots, uh, have mandatory sweeping. Uh, we used to do it, it used to be in the municipal code some time ago and it made a big difference on the amount of rubbish and trash that was blowing all over the place. And, uh, you know, some of the parking lots that you see now are, they're really pretty, pretty grubby. Now, I don't know whether it's still in the municipal code, I didn't check that out, but I, I think that we should have something that has them doing that. At, what they do, they do, they hire somebody to do it after a certain hour and, and, um, in the early morning hours, I guess, and then they, and, and it really cuts down on the debris that's, that's all over our, all over the, uh, desert. Anyway, just for a thought for everybody, we're, we're looking at beautifying the city and I don't think trash has ever beautified it.
Commissioner?
My comment is I hope we have more than two items the rest of our year this year, so...
I agree.
I think I can arrange that.
Commissioner Do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, like my, uh, colleagues, I would like to say that we're looking forward to a positive, uh, year for twenty sixteen and, um, delighted to be here and as Mrs. Porter indicated, um, we should, we are using two tracks, one is to state of correction and then, uh, state of prosperity. And I, I would like to think that the state of California doesn't invest all of its, uh, what I say, with challenges in one entity. That is, it seems that we should have more. If there's an outcry for certain services, then I think if there is a demand, I think it requires more agencies or more entities. And in fact, if the government itself is not involved, uh, that amazes me.
Yes, Commissioner Kurt?
Speaking of going into two thousand and sixteen, it just reminded me, um, what's the, what's the city's feeling on the development department, um, for two, going into two thousand and sixteen throughout the year with, um, projected development? We know we saw some spark a little bit last year with some, some retail. What are, what are we feeling and gearing up for within the city as far as not just residential but commercial, um, industrial projects? Are we, is the plate gonna get a little heavier this year, do we think?
Scott, take that, 'cause he's...
Just, just in general, just in general.
General, we are seeing more activity, uh, on residential, uh, more tracks gearing up to come back, um, or to re-entitle their, their prior, um, tentative track maps. Uh, we're also seeing more medical, um, some of the projects that are finishing construction now are medical, um, and we just recently received a, um, in total, it's about a hundred thousand square feet of medical south of, uh, the Saint Mary's campus, um, so that, that you'll see in a couple of months. Um, so, we are seeing, um, some traction, um, hoping that this year we'll, we will see more, um, just based on the economy than, uh, two thousand and fifteen.
Haven't you been told too that part of the medical might go smaller scale because of the way Obamacare is working and the need for, um, different types of specialized?
Uh, there is, there is some notion that we, office doesn't need that much space, um, that the companies are consolidating. Um, my understanding is that the Victor Valley is underserved in that category, so we, we will likely see more. So we, we will likely see more.
In terms of just expanding a little bit on not just development, but in terms of the development department, what our goals are for two thousand sixteen, I don't know if you're aware, but, um, we use the TIDemark permitting system. It's probably about fifteen years old, if not older. Uh, we're updating that to a new program which, uh, will allow applicants, contractors, residents to be able to apply for things through the development department online.
And they track the progress of it online as, as it goes through the department?
Exactly. You'll have an account with a password. They can log in and see all their stuff that they've got going. Um, we're hoping to have that done by the end of the year and, and starting to implement it by the end of the year. That off in February. And then we are, our other main priority is to be better customer service and business friendly. Working on aspects of our website as well as training and outreach.
Mr. Chairman, may I amend my comments? That is that I forgot to commend the code enforcement and the sheriff department. It was brought to my attention that code enforcement and the sheriff department, um, alleviated or eliminated someone who was operating a marijuana dispensary in the city of Victorville. And, uh, there was swift and swift action taken. And, um, that's to the credit of the code department and the sheriff department for San Bernardino County.
I have nothing and I am also optimistic and looking forward to it in two thousand and sixteen. We'll, uh, call this a day and, oh, sorry. Oh, hi.
Were you here for an item? Are you Mrs. Diaz?
Yeah.
Hey, she just wants to know what happened on the, um...
Item two, uh, item number two was the open door counseling agency. Uh, it was continued to February tenth because of a noticing issue that was, uh, the applicant provided labels that didn't include all of the properties that needed to be noticed. Uh, the Elks Lodge across the street diagonal was not noticed and therefore we need to send out notices to three property owners. And therefore we're continuing to February tenth.
Correct.
Yes.
At five o'clock. And also, um, Chris, isn't it, are, are these, uh, planning commission meetings recorded on the, um, website? The audio or just the audio? So if you were to hear, if you were here to, uh, learn about that item, um, it should be up in a day or so. You can go to the city of Victorville website and you'll be able to hear the audio testimony that happened tonight just for your own reference and preparation. Five o'clock.
That's me. There must have been a misunderstanding and I apologize if there was, but it's, they're always at five o'clock. So I apologize. But, but the item has been continued as, as Chris noted. So there will be an opportunity to present testimony at that February tenth meeting as well.
Margaret, if you could stay back, Margaret. I, I'd like to speak with you. If you could stay back for a few moments. If you could stay back for a few moments, I'd like to speak with you.
All right. Close our, our meeting out this evening and for our February tenth, two thousand sixteen.
Going to adjourn to the special workshop, um, be taking place on January twenty seventh.
Thank you.